Educating, Informing, Serving. FEC TV, Keeping Government Honest.
I need to approve the minutes from the April 7, 2020 meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. Questions, comments? Motion's been made and seconded to approve minutes of April 7, 2020 meeting. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion passes to approve the minutes. Are there any public comments on items that are not on the agenda? I have three minutes per person.
I have something I would like to discuss.
Yes, sir.
So, hello, my name is Jason Terry and I've lived in Bellows Falls since 1999. I own a house on Henry Street. And I recently joined the school board, Rockingham School Board in the town. And I'm quite concerned about the taxes that are going to be coming down on all of the residents in the town. I'm not sure if you folks are aware, but there is, on April 16, the Joint Fiscal Office informed the Senate Finance Committee that due to deficit and education fund, funding fiscal year 2021 school budgets as they have been approved by voters would require a 26 cent property tax increase. I also posted that on the Future of Bellows Falls website. And one thing that I have done is I proposed a 10% cut for fiscal year 2021 that a budget, that the budget was already passed and I proposed that cut. So that's something we're going to have to discuss at our upcoming meetings. And I'm finding that boards do not go as fast as business does. So things take, seems like forever. So we have to find my solution, and I'd like to present this and come up with some solutions going forward. We have to find alternative solutions to increase revenue. I am for a rental impact tax and we will have to cut and/or manage the current budget down. Hardworking Vermonters cannot afford this. So my idea is to levy a tax on landlords, which would then trickle down to tenants. Because if you look at it, statistically, we're 44% rentals in the town of Bellows Falls or Rockingham or whatever you want to call it. So that's a huge burden for single-family homeowners to pay that tax when rentals are not paying their fair share compared to single-family homeowners, with they have more children in the rentals and so on and so forth. So I don't know where to begin. I don't know how to start, but we need to take a look at this. Or we have to cut severely and there's going to be a lot of people that lose jobs. And I don't want that to happen. So maybe we need to do both. I'm not sure. So I don't know where to start, but I want to propose this and hopefully we can start moving this forward.
Jason, I got a question. Peter Golick on the board.
Yep.
Is that 26 cent increase a result of the penalty that's being imposed for special ed? I think I read something about that a couple of months before the budget. Is that a result of that or?
I believe that is, if you're talking about the special ed.
I think so, yeah.
So I think, I think what they're talking about with that is Article 1 in Title, or Act 173, I believe. And again, I just joined, I'm not an expert, I'm learning as I go here. I don't even know the, you know, the, how to do all these board things. So I'm just a normal, everyday guy that just cares. So I think what they're doing is they're pushing, maybe pushing that back. But they, to pay the special ed, special needs, they get most of that money from the meals and tax revenue from the state. And as you know, everything's shut down and a payment is due. So if that payment is not made, then it falls on the taxpayer. That's you, that's me, that's everyone who owns a home, owns property, and that will need to be paid. So it's not hyperbole, this is happening. You know, this, this is happening. So it's a problem. So we need to come up with solutions. And as a reminder, one thing I've learned here is if you want something done quickly in Vermont, we'll get it done tomorrow. So we got to change that mentality and we have to, we have to, you know, it can't be the same old, same old. This is how we've always done it in Vermont. It has to be, we need to come up with different ways to, to look at everything. And for me, everything's on the table. You know, my son is a, he just graduated King State, wants to be music education major.
Yes, sir.
Yep, fire away.
We hear you. We've gone over the three minutes, we've heard you as a board, what we can discuss, what we can do perhaps, get it on the future agenda and see what to do. We all hear you.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much.
I'm willing to do whatever legwork is needed to help out. Again, I'm just a citizen who cares and I think there's more people like me and we need to have our voice, so.
Thank you very much. We'll keep you posted as to any movement and what we decide that we can do as a select board here to address it, you know, whether it be form a committee and see what we can do there.
Sounds good. Well, thank you for your time and keep up the good work.
Thank you very much.
Gaetano Guy Payne would like to speak.
Okay, yes.
Hello, all, just a quick question and I'm not sure if you're ready to respond, but I'm really interested on the plans that the Select Board and probably the trustees have in terms of hiring a interim town manager. This date is coming up quick, quickly and curious to know what the plans are or at least what the thinking is. That's it.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have public comment?
I would.
Who?
Hello?
Deb Bryant.
Yes, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay, not, not a lot, however, I've had a lot of contact with citizens who say they don't use a lot of IT and a lot of website usage. And technically, according to open meeting law, we are supposed to have three paper locations where we locate copies of our agendas and our warnings and that sort of thing for them to see. We don't have those because the town hall's closed, the police department's closed and the library is closed. So I have suggested that perhaps we use the kiosk out front of the town hall to comply. The BFPD, BFFD could post a board outside of their building and so could RFPL. I think we need to do something to make sure that citizens have the opportunity to see our warnings about meeting agendas and to participate. They need to find, and I told them it has to be Zoom meetings at this point, but they need to be able to see those meeting warnings and they can't because our buildings are closed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
Do you want me to just respond to that real quick?
Yes, please.
Yeah, just a quick response, I agree with you, they need to be able to see those. The notices are supposed to be being posted on the doors of each of those places, on the door of the police station, town hall and the library. So I'll check and make sure that's happening, but that's how we disseminate that.
Thank you.
Okay, so Kathleen says it is on the front door of town hall.
Did you hear that? It was posted on the front doors, but we'll, we'll make sure they're posted.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I'm just thinking the kiosk is now empty of events, it's a good place for the town and village to use for postings. Thank you.
Anyone else? No one else? No one else? Okay, manager's report, please.
Okay, a few things, can you guys hear me okay? Up there? Okay. Just to let you know with coronavirus, obviously, town hall is still closed. You call the regular numbers, regular phone numbers, all the numbers are forwarded to our cell phones. You can email us, you can access the land records online. Hopefully, some of you have tried to do that and succeeded. We may open up the clerk's office before the other offices depending on what the clerk wants to do because the governor just specifically allowed that. She'd be able to meet with one customer at a time, she might do it via appointment. So if you're interested in getting into the clerk's office, contact Kathleen and she can work with you on that. Utility payments and taxes can be mailed. We're doing credit card payments over the phone and we waived as much of the fee as we can. It's normally 3.25%, we're charging 0.1% because we need to charge something to make the system work. But we are getting a lot of folks making those payments, so hopefully that will be something people might want to do in the future. Thanks for your patience, people are being really good about making payments and during this time because it is more difficult than it usually is. The recycling center's still operating. It's one at a time, don't empty your attic, this is not the time to bring a lot of goods that go into the big building in the middle. This is the time just to bring recycling and household waste. Gary Fox is still available to help businesses with applying for the support that's out there. And I just want to let people know, a local bank has distributed $2 million in PPP funds to businesses in our area, so that's well, 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 Westminster, Ruckman and Austin. So the aid is getting here, which is, which is good. Red or False Connections is still doing their work and I just want to say thank you to the employees who have had to deal with lots of changes, safety hazards, unexpected work schedule changes. I just want you to know, you're appreciated. So that's it.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the manager? Peter Susan? Can you guys hear okay? Peter Susan?
I can hear okay, but Wendy, can you go to one side or the other because you're like right behind Gaetano in the camera? That's good. Thank you.
Moving on to the agenda. Item number one, development office, Gary Fox.
Yep, so at the last, previous meeting of the Select Board, the Select Board requested to table this item and bring it back at a later meeting with input from the theater committee. And so I sought out that input and it's actually a broader, a larger situation than just looking at alternatives for a theater, the lower theater. There's, the wiring needs to be upgraded, the lift, kitchen sprinkler, there's a lot of items that need to be up to code. And in the development work for a building, being able to identify architecturally, what we need to be done and what the costs are, are the first step in a multi-year process of developing a plan for making upgrades. There's all sorts of different grant plans available from accessibility modification grants, historic preservation grants, the town hall is eligible for tax credit improvements, which can be sold to banks on 80 or 90 cents on the dollar for things that need to come up to code. So what this grant would do is take the first baby steps in identifying the issues in alternative analysis, what can be done with the space and what are the aspects that need to be upgraded to code versus the need to be upgraded functionality and start to put some cost to those in a rough sense so that as we move along through the year, we can present long-term plans and what a step-by-step piece would be a triage for bringing that portion of the building up to par in the same way that we've done with the rest of the town hall. So this grant application to BDCC would be for architectural feasibility study and alternatives analysis, which would start giving us the first piece of information on the lower theater that are, at least the first ones that I'm aware of, that are architecturally correct and to engineering standards as well. That's what I discovered talking to the theater group. Every, every time they started talking about what to do with the theater, they ran into all of these issues, because they're very blunt. And I think for us, for the town halls, that larger issue, bringing it up to standard.
Mr. Chairman, may I make a comment?
Yes, sir.
I guess my concern after Sue's comments last meeting about the theater committee not being sure what they really want to do down there, I just want to remind people that the current bond for a theater and town hall renovation doesn't expire till 2025, that's five years from now. And if we're, I think this, this whole grant process, even though it's just preliminary and it's just looking to find out what costs and things might be, in the on five years, a bond movement could be, come up with and we may be faced with putting up, trying to get some money, which easily could be reaching into $250,000 if you had the lift on and electrical work and everything else that's got to be done downstairs, I'd be a little hesitant to go after this grant at this point. I don't know how anybody else feels on the board.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions also.
Yes, sir.
So are we saying that the upgrades or the improvements you're talking about, the wiring, et cetera, is that contingent of being able to do something down there with our organization, whether it be making street arcs or our own theater or?
So what I'm saying is that we, we don't know exactly what the situation is there and beyond what we want to do for final use, bonding for repairs, like for what we did with the theater, is a quick way to get through that. But looking at it, 2025, the current bond coming due and having funds available, it can easily take five years to work through smaller grants and develop plans and end uses to the point where you can apply for the larger modification grants and community development block programs. And this $5,000 would be a baby step in identifying what the situation is for developing a five-year plan for improving the downstairs and then even, even knowing what's possible there to have a reasonable discussion about end use.
Then my follow-up would be, did we have a discussion on, as an admirer, for preference possibility, you talked about train stations, you talked about the lower theaters and the hotel, and far as being able to rent it or something, do you have to do something to secure it? Or commercial, or even our own theater?
Yes, certainly, in order to have the lower theater be income-producing as well as continue to host meetings, it would need those upgrades. But I mean, a cost-benefit analysis or what kind of income could be generated there would be part of any long-term plan. But until we know what the situation is, and this is a good opportunity to start getting a picture with our spending taxpayer.
Why don't we talk about soundproofing, so like what we're hearing, what's going on upstairs?
Yeah, all of us, yeah, there's a.
Okay, that's, you touched upon a brief, but my follow-up question, my second question is, say for example, that must be having something done in the future with, what about the meetings of Select Board, the trustees and whoever else conducts meetings there? How would that point affect it? As far as availability and everything?
Yeah, so that's just a planning and a programming question is, as you fix up the space that you need to come producing, what you want to do with it and where you want to have your meetings. It's still, it's a fine place for public meetings and Select Board.
We're almost off the wire, I guess, for live meetings, et cetera.
Yeah, let me just add, we've been under the assumption that the Select Board and trustees would potentially need to meet their activities, which is the great views. And the Select Board and trustees come first, especially Select Boards who own the building. But this, so this would be also a way to evaluate the lighting improvements that you've been wanting for years. That would be part of this study. You're not going to get the lighting improvements, you'll have, we'll have to coordinate what it would cost.
I haven't seen the lighting improvements in several years, I'm betting that's, I'm a lot to express there. But my only question would be, have we talked with the theater manager or anybody? See if, if anybody's been involved, I would assume, what the costs are there or?
Yeah, so those pieces come a little bit later. This is an assessment of the conditions and what's possible. My understanding of the discovery from, from talking to committee members is that they can't really get to a point of any planning without knowing what the conditions are, what needs to be done and what's possible.
He's aware of this grant application, that's the question.
Yes, certainly, yes. Yeah, we have discussions all the time about what we would like to do with the space, what others would like to do, the potential for being flexible and adaptive with the space. He's very active about theater committee and the opposition that I have.
Okay. So then, anything?
Yeah, well, I mean, I, I think that it's, I think we should go for this because we do need to know what the status of that space is and what needs to be done. And this is a grant that we have no match to. It'll enable us to get a good analysis and for planning for the future. So I don't see a harm in not, not applying for the grant.
Anything?
I'll just agree with what Peter said, I think it's too early to be going after something like this and just, I know it's not costing a cent, but at the time that we're in, not in favor of it right now, so.
One final comment I'd like to make is that I want to make, I would be concerned that we don't have a case of the tail wagging a dog versus a dog wagging a tail here. Following up on some of Stefan's comments, that's where that's coming from.
And I don't agree that it's not costing a dime in taxpayer money, no matter where it comes from. So I'll say the same thing I said the last time, is that money might be able to be needed. You look at the amount of money the federal government has been spending that they didn't plan for right now, I think that's not in favor at this time.
Again, that money is, it's earmarked for certain things and it wouldn't go for this, but Gary, is there another potential project? Because this is money that's been set aside for various people in Wyndham County. Is there some other project that, obviously this one doesn't have support, is there some other project you would consider applying for?
Yeah, so two of these funds are obligated already and they're in BDC cans for these types of projects, so they can't be, you know, taken back and put to other federal projects, but BFADC is requesting some funds for pre-architectural work on the 21 Island Street property to provide better applications for the funding to build a facility. So we are, in a sense, with BFADC going in for other projects there. I don't know if there's any specific town one.
Town project.
Certainly, there's always more work that could be done in the train station. You have application into the USDA to match town meeting funds to begin that architectural work for redeveloping that building.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a comment here?
Available for?
Not really relevant to this.
I mean, are they going to be distributing it all out to other?
I don't think it's going that quickly. I don't think we're in danger of missing out on something if we don't, if I misunderstood. I don't think it's a problem to not apply for this.
Peter?
Yeah, it's not really relevant to this discussion, but in lieu of the two meetings that we've had in regards to the Restart Vermont project, could probably Gary or Wendy give a quick, short overview for the public as to what's going on there or what may potentially be going on there with, with funds?
That doesn't have anything to do with what we're doing.
I know it, I know it, I'm just bringing it up before either one of them runs out of the meeting. I think it would be a good move to the, let the public know what's going on there.
It's not, wasn't really public information, but they can answer it if they want.
Sure, it's, it's, it is public, it's an idea that is in process of the Agency of Commerce and Community Development of the state. And what they would like to do is, I have a program that's called Restart Vermont and they're asking towns who have revolving loan funds to participate in and it's voluntary participation.
I think he's referencing your comment in your manager's report about the $2 million that's being distributed.
Oh.
No, no, that's incorrect, yeah, Gaetano, she's on the right track.
Okay.
So the program isn't finalized yet, they've asked for comments from municipalities, the subset of the RLF committee has made some comments, the entire RLF committee is being asked for their input. There's going to be a webinar tomorrow on it, the final program would probably be finished, I would say in a week or two. What the state wants to do, the purpose of it, is to centralize requests for funding from small businesses. The loans would be maximum $20,000, grants of $5,000, so relatively small. The business would have to have 10 employees or less, they annual revenues of $1 million or less, that's what they're talking now, they might increase that a little bit. But the intent is to have a centralized location in the state for businesses to go to for funding and that would be businesses who were not funded under the federal PPP program.
So is this a derivative of the COVID situation over there?
Oh, yeah, it's, it's in response to COVID, I'm sorry, I should have said that, yes.
It also involves our RLF funding, so that you know that some of that money may be taken. You know, as Wendy said, nothing is, there's been some in concrete yet, that'll happen maybe after tomorrow when the state returns a proposal, but part of the money will be, is currently in our RLF fund, will be turned over somewhat to the state. The people make applications and which come back to us for final approval, but I just want, people ought to know that, that they're, they are playing with, with our bonds there. To what extent, we don't know yet.
And will that come back before the Select Board?
It's a voluntary, yes, I would think it would come before the Select Board.
Totally different discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, back to the grant here, what do you want to build? Motion, no more.
Well, I would move to apply for the grant, but I don't think that the other board members agree, so.
Okay, no motion, so we will move on. Item number two, financial matters, finance office, heard financial.
Yes, when you receive these today, Mary put it delay, Shannon is on the phone or not on the phone, rather, she's on screen.
I'm here.
You can answer questions that you have or possibly give an overview, Shannon?
So it, at a high level, we're on target to meet or exceed revenues. We are not sure yet what it looks like, given the pandemic, although I think that will probably be hitting our next tax bill and utility cycle. But right now, we're in a good position as far as revenue is concerned and we're taking precautions with expenses and personnel getting ahead of the curve. But as far as budget, I anticipate that we will come in under for expenses and we look good all around, both highway and general.
A question, Shannon, and going through the pages, I noticed the road funds from the state, early about 50% in, are we expecting more from them or with this situation going on with the COVID, are we, are they, you know, cutting back on the funding?
Nope, we'll receive 100%.
Okay, just curious, I noticed that in the project, it only showed 50% for the three road categories there.
No, no, good question, nope, we're still on target to get all 100%.
Okay, thank you.
Kind of goes along with this, but it might be more towards item B. I'll ask it now, in reference to the statement about Peter. It looks to me like it's showing, you know, not knowing that there's possibly $103,000 deficit there. Am I, is that correct?
So I think that we will have approximately $100,000 deficit in revenue. I think Wendy's going to speak in a little bit to some efforts they're going to try and make from a concession standpoint. But we will also see a reduction in expense for almost the same amount. We now have furloughed our theater cinema employees, and we aren't purchasing concessions. Utilities are minimal because there's no one there, and we're not renting movies. So in the same respect, we're missing out on revenue. I anticipate our expenses will be under as well.
Okay, it doesn't show in the report here, that's why I asked a question. It showed that it will, by doing the things you mentioned, it shows the savings from that, and then it shows the loss of revenue projected of use and leave subjected to. It shows a significant loss that I don't think selling concessions will balance.
Are you talking about Wendy's COVID statement?
I am.
That's opposed to the actual financial statement.
I said it was kind of the same, so.
Yeah, I mean, I can go to that if you want. Basically, I was just talking about personnel costs and that. That was the $103,000.
But would it be helpful if we had the numbers for the reduction in films and utilities? So we could get an accurate number, because looking at your projected numbers with this information, and that's the first thing that caught my attention, was a significant impact.
Yeah, I think what we should give you is anticipated for the year in both revenues and expenses, which we did when we were doing the budget, but we should do updated ones now that we have some experience of COVID.
Shannon, if I'm not mistaken, we're pretty close with the expenses and income in that theater right now, including cinema and theater. If I, my math's correct, is our revenue is $219,000 and our expenses are $221,300. So we're about $2,300 different. So if we can find ways to, you know, freeze expenditures, I think we aren't going to be that much of a $130,000 deficit as written in the statement. But Wendy has a point. We need to, we need to project out, you know, what we anticipate spending for those items that she mentioned.
Right, that's my anticipation, is that, you know, the theater will pretty much, is probably done for the fiscal year. Maybe it will open up before June 30th, but I anticipate it'll be the last thing to open. So my feeling is that we're, we're pretty much broke even, and although we'll have a shortfall in revenue, we'll see the same shortfall in expenses.
Yeah, also, the recycling is a little concerning. Looks like we got $117,000 in expenses and only $104 in income. But, yeah, it's only two months away, so.
So we, we never anticipated to break even for recycling.
No, yeah, I realize that. I just, I'm just bringing those numbers out, that's all. And hopefully, for the next meeting, I'll have a press release ready and a proposed price increase. I think Wendy's seen it and Gary's seen it. So it'll be to the boards for the next meeting or ahead of the time, so you can look at it.
And we do still have a grant revenue coming through with the elevator modernization taking forever, but that revenue is going to, it's shown as here right now. Do you know the number you're talking about here?
I think it's $50,000, both.
Okay, I was going to worry about that. It's $50,000 that we don't have yet, that's not shown.
Any other questions on the first part? I don't think I want to just roll into the COVID financial impact or? Everyone read that, the changes are in red from the last one. Or is there any more questions for Shannon on your finance report?
No, all set.
And moving on to the COVID-19 financial impact. It's been updated. Recent updates are in red, so everyone has a copy or has read that. Changes from last April 14, a week ago. March 1st, April 14, April 21 changes.
Did you want me to go over this?
Do we want to go over this in detail? Or does anyone have any questions? It seems pretty straightforward to me. Or does anyone want to hear the whole thing again?
I can hit the highlight.
I think that would be good for the public, who don't necessarily have a copy of them.
Right.
Right, what they can do is post this somewhere on the website, because it has been prepared the day of the meetings, both last week and this week. Just things are changing so quickly. And this document is for both the town and the village, which is unusual. But they're, they're being impacted in very similar ways. Just a couple of things that I think are important. The village utility fund, or we have projected a net increase to fund balance in the town budget and the village budget. And that projection continues to be the case, but obviously, it needs to be updated regularly now. The two village utility funds, or I'll skip the village stuff. Right, slide for me. Cash flow is character being monitored. We normalize the cash balance between $3 and $7 million for conserving cash. Some town debt may qualify for a program that is for utilities that the state has implemented, which allows a delay of payments on debts of a year for May of 2021, which is significant. Some town debt might qualify for that. Property taxes, that's the big issue, in particular to what Jason was saying earlier. Primary source of revenue for both village and town general funds. And I didn't check on this, Greve River Hydro pays 18.85% of town taxes, so it's unlikely we have a deficit between Greve River Hydro and their two utilities. That's about 22% of our total. The final quarterly payment of this year's tax bills, property tax bills, it's due May 11. Payments are coming in at a normal rate, which is a good thing. We'll begin to receive the estro payments next week, which makes up about 50% of the total, so we can do another update next week. But people are paying their taxes in the patterns that they normally do, which is a good thing. And people are being very patient about the different ways that they have to pay their taxes. So we're not getting a lot of complaints, which is terrific. The legislature is considering a bill that would give select boards the authority to create new deadlines for property tax payments next year. It would also give them the ability to decrease wage or establish gray spirits for penalties and interest on late property taxes. And that legislation is working its way through the process now. Could be adopted as early as next week. Again, things are changing constantly. And I just stress again, it's not just difficult to predict the future. It's actually not possible because of, this is a situation we've never been in before. All levels of government are reacting in different ways than the private sectors reacting in very strong ways. So not to say that we shouldn't prepare for the unknown by cutting back on unneeded expenses. So that's the next section, is about expenses. Opera House Theater closed in early March with cancellation of a large spring light show. The theater's closed, if it's closed, the last four months of fiscal year, which is what we expect, the loss of revenue. So that's, we're not saying that's the net, but the loss of revenue is projected to be $135,000. We furloughed the opera house manager, reduced schedule six hours a week, and the part-time staff is no longer being paid. That's saving $8,000 a month, obviously not enough to offset the $135,000. Then I'll skip to the other furloughs that we've recently done. This week, we furloughed the assistant clerk in seven highway positions. That saves $53,000 per month. The reason we furloughed the highway positions is because they can, in the, in the, I'll try to speak to this more. We believe that we were operating in a way that was safe, but the Agency of Commerce and Community Development came down with interpretations of the governor's rules that said we couldn't do things like grading, which is obviously something that you can do with a vehicle. They said we couldn't do sweeping. That interpretation may change tomorrow, and then we'll reevaluate those furloughs. There are, there's lots of work that needs to be done, ditching. And there's also the public structure is particularly concerned about work that needs to be done to prepare for summer roadway work on Grizzle Drive. We also discontinued user recreation for our time staff this week. So looking at from March 1st to April 21.
What does that mean?
Sorry?
What does that mean, reduce?
That we're not, some of the part-time people were in pay status, even though they weren't working even close to the hours that they had previously. So now all of the. He's taking over all of the activities. There's a lot of in-your stuff he's planning for the programs in the summer, and he's not full-time, he's part-time. So this work regularly ebbs and flows during the season. For January, I should say. So the staffing, March 1 was 41 full-time staff, 26 part-time. This is both village and town, that does not include part-time police. Full-time does include police. So as of April 21, we're down to 29 full-time and no part-time, but again, not including police. So we've reduced staff significantly. So that's what we've done most recently.
Is the maintenance position, is that in here or something?
Oh, that's been furloughed.
That's not updated in this?
Actually, it is. That's one of the nine furloughs.
Seven highway.
But the person is working one hour a day, one hour a day to keep an eye on the systems in the building. Because you can furlough, it doesn't have to be all or nothing. You can furlough people for a particular amount of time.
Any questions, comments? Pretty good, thank you very much for that report. IMC, financial matters, consideration. Public Works Position after town meeting.
Yeah, do you want me to give you an overview of this?
I don't think, this report seems the same as we saw before.
It is.
I don't. Go ahead for the public, and the public will know what you want.
Sure, and this is to discuss reinstating the public works director position in light of the actions that were taken at town meeting. Town meeting voted to reinstate the funding and then requested in a separate, a separate vote that just looked more reinstated position. What I did, I just provided the information that we gave you during the budget conversations earlier this year, showing the savings, staff, staff's position, that the position saves much more than it costs. The position doesn't require that the individual be an engineer, but because the individual is an engineer, that alone saved us probably $200,000 within the Earth Lake project, which we may very well not have done the additional roadway work if we hadn't had Everett on board. And this shouldn't be about Everett, this should just be about the position itself. But we have information for you, just showing that the public works director position is necessary. And if there's not a public works director at all, then a lot of that, that work would fall on the planning director, the manager, finance director, and likely the development director. And those are all of the same hourly rate, so there's really no savings, and that staff would have less time to do other work.
Question?
Yes, sir.
Do we know the status of Mike Hines at this time? Is he back to work, still out?
He is out on workers' compensation.
And we have no idea how long he's going to be gone, correct?
That's accurate.
Okay. The item number three sort of speaks to the reason why we should reinstate this position. You got four items there. Number A is not that real important, it's an access permit, but paying bids, chip seal bids, and the 10-wheel plow truck. All those require a little bit of work and input. And some of the people that Wendy has mentioned, that could help with that, I don't think are qualified, they don't have the background for it. I know a couple of them had mentioned to me that they don't have any idea what's going on with that. So hearing that Mike is not available, although we do have people that are covering his position currently, and hate to say it, but thanks to COVID-19, we will be able to reduce the workforce. But I still think this position needs to be reinstated. So I would be in favor of voting to reinstate this position, as that is the intent of the town voters, who did increase that budget specifically for that purpose. Now, granted, that's true, but we don't, we have, the board has a discretion as to what to do with that money. And I think if we don't put it where the desire is, I think we're making a big mistake here.
I have to agree with Peter on that, that, and again, if we're talking about the position, not the individual, there's a lot of things that need to be done. And also looking into, we're not just thinking this summer. We have, whoever is in this position would be looking at 2021's construction year as well. And I think without somebody in that position, that's going to fall through the cracks.
What's not listed here also is the Hyde Hill project, and the drainage work on Grizzle Drive is direly needed. I noticed in the paving bids there that the, in the chip seal bids, some of that got changed around to do a little more paving and less chip sealing. So someone had to have the intelligence to make that decision. So I just reinforced my positive vote for this position.
Okay, thank you for the comment here.
I'm going to stick to what I said before. I don't think it's necessary. There's a lot of things on this list here that don't need to be engineered. A paving RFP does not need to be engineered. I think with proper management of a road foreman, then. This is stuff that easily to get get done I'm not saying we don't need engineering for anything but. I don't see it as a necessary position.
Have anything?
Where do we stand with the uh we talked about chip sealing that we're gonna. I think we're gonna take a look at and possibly redoing that where do you stand with that?
I was gonna bring that up when we got to three C not interested. Contacting with the same company where we haven't fixed the last project. I don't I don't have the answer to that.
I mean do you want?
Which three C you're I think we should wait until guys say. I think I'm I think I don't I don't have a good comment.
Look at the possibilities of. Take a look at that I mentioned it back there in budget time that maintenance position. I think the numbers came in roughly around seventy nine thousand. That's. Something that I'm not so sure of the the I support so.
Question of of sorry.
I feel as though. With the amount of staff we have here. You know. Another position that's over six figures to put together RFPs. I mean that's that's I just I can't buy into that logic.
Well I I think you're underestimating what that position entails but um we do have to make a decision in any event I mean what to do with this budget that was. Extra money that was given to us so if it's not going to be in a new public works as we in a state in the public works. Position it should I in my opinion to go to engineering because we will have some engineering needs.
Okay I was speaking to the position everyone else had a chance to speak to it I was speaking that what I already said and. It shouldn't cost that much to get those those things done it's not you know we keep saying we don't need an engineer yet we have an engineer in that position so that seems like. Majority of that work. You could get done with a highway foreman it's I just. That's a. We've already just.
We don't have a foreman and we don't know when we're going to get him back.
But we should yeah I'm not I don't hire and fire I just know my position we make a budget. I don't know what the answer to that question is. If we had that position Phil do you think we we'd be okay Peter?
Putting on a person we hired if he has the qualification the background for it and knows the town like uh Mike Hines does and Everett does uh yeah probably we'd be all right. But otherwise as Sue just said if we don't have someone there's uh this money should be. Given to to the engineering should we should set this money aside for engineering costs down the road somewhere because it may come to a point where we're gonna need one.
I don't see.
How are you gonna pay for it there's no money in the budget for one you don't have one there any money in there now we cut it out.
I I agree put the money. Into engineering for the next year a year from now we'll see where we're at it's not gonna be elsewhere.
And we we hadn't planned on engineering anywhere near that amount. Not even close. Nowhere near.
Well we also don't know what's coming I mean. We could have another major storm we could have a major culvert go out I mean we need to have we don't we haven't had money in engineering because we had a public works director who happened to be an engineer. Now we have neither or we next fiscal year we'll have neither of those things so we need I think we need to put money. Into. Engineering though I mean I. Because right now there is nothing in that budget line. And I I disagree that there's no engineering for twenty twenty one there will be twenty twenty one engineering needs it's right here on this. Paper.
What is it? Hundred nineteen five or?
That's this yellow part right on the second.
Yeah.
Engineering calendar year twenty twenty one design leach road box culvert Oak Street culvert replacement Hartley Hill Road Design. Continued sidewalk work I mean a lot of these things need engineering.
The other thing we're looking at here is that if we if we don't have a person in that position and we just money a lot money. To an engineering you're not going to get someone dedicated so if they start work and. They get called to another job because they're working for another company. They're gonna be working for that company not for the town of Rockingham so there's a problem you could be waiting two weeks with the project shut down but there's somewhere to come back and and. Give you the the answers you're looking for that's my only concern.
Well just could the manager or some or effort highlight I mean I can read it here but I mean. You got some figures here that. You know a hundred thousand a hundred three thousand a hundred twenty four thousand aren't some of these projects when they're put up the bid the engineering is uh backed out in the the bid specs?
Well look at the bottom um section so where it says the blue one a hundred forty four thousand that's the next year's. Engineering that is not in public works structure so so then you can look up here and see where the blue is.
Yeah.
Permitting is something that would be challenging for a foreman to do I would think especially the act of fifty permit so you would certainly want some sort of professional for that.
Yeah engineer for a simple. Culvert replacement oversight?
It depends on how complicated the culvert.
Number ten request for proposals we get an engineer for RFPs now that's unknown.
I think the point here I mean. We just happen to have a public works director at this time or at least until the end of Ju- uh June. Who happens to be an engineer we're talking about a public works director position which clearly you. For you three decide that that's not necessarily I I I disagree with that but we do have engineering needs coming up for future projects. So if this funding is not to be used for public works director. I think we need to set it aside for engineering because there will be engineering need.
We're just discussing engineering costs so. That's what we were talking about.
Well let me ask.
We're trying to go through them because we're not seeing the hundred twenty four thousand one forty four that they have totaled up here my first question was why would we need to spend? Four thousand dollars for for an engineer for it says right here a simple oversight Oak Street culvert. That's that's one example in twenty twenty one.
Right.
So I I don't know what the sidewalk work is in Fallas well we have sixteen thousand dollars in sidewalk work. We didn't fund that did we fund that additional sidewalk work that much? I don't think we did.
Okay so this is.
There's that stairs design we would pay someone to design those stairs. I would repair DPW twenty thousand dollars for that.
And this is showing how much it would cost for an outside person right?
We're not planning on doing this thing but you totaled it up to give us this number of what you're using as a comparison of of why we need these funds.
Right.
Are we replacing the stairs? Are we doing the stairs?
Yeah very a lot of those things that do happen stairs for example we've got to do the design ahead time foresee put into the budget. To be put out for a bid for the year after so there's a lot of things you know that have like designed which road box culvert you know this tram running coming up so. Uh without the design we'd like to put that out. These are estimated prices of what it would cost if you put everything out for example. Point nine sent back and says I want this much sidewalk so I'm just gonna look at it and normally the way I put the way I estimate these is twenty percent of the total construction cost. I didn't dive into the nitty gritty to each one of these to say why is it gonna cost this for that. This for this. This is approximate. Do you have to do all these maybe not uh Black Street Jane Jane wall does need to happen that's something that. I'm gonna put forward a couple of these at least for the actually engineering grant for that. For next year that's gonna be your twenty probably twenty four thousand dollars it's it's a tricky project. It's a wall that's collapsing on you know into house it's been happening for years. So yeah you can get a bit go down from each one of these this is but this is approximate what it's gonna cost unless you don't do something. Which is possible.
I agree that I didn't remember budgeting or all this.
Oh some of this one I'm not I'm not man picking I'm being action. Right some of this is stuff like I said is is stuff to be. Budgeted and planned for for future projects so it's not always gonna happen this stuff is not necessarily gonna happen this year you just think ahead. What is gonna happen and be ready for the money whether one does come out whether it's a grant or this. General Government money that might come from this way.
Can we can we come back to my question of the. Some of these projects I understand they go up the bid engineering already get the bid.
Not for these.
Not for these.
Oh that's usually be trained for for town funding highway for self funding highway projects. Even more. Well you gotta maybe maybe destruction I might call it one as well people put together in two weeks you don't have that already open program. That will pay the construction you know the structural area on that one you know what eighty twenty it's an eighty one match. But most of them if you're doing your own projects does not include if you have a lot of projects through projects that's territory.
Right.
So they for example uh birth plate property the plan profile cross sections and all that kind of stuff on that on the project. You know for sidewalks if everything had to have a certain elevation so I was not wondering why we.
So you have that then?
Yeah.
And is that requirement?
Now if added the contractor is gonna wing it there's so many grades critical grades to it. I wouldn't recommend it.
What other towns and communities do or villages that don't have an engineer but that's the settlement project the state of Vermont doesn't settle the plate you do some of this though.
If it's they would have it's like hard to provide uh payment change they're getting ready to put out it's already on the bid. You're talking multi-million dollar project a great amount of five hundred dollars so the state of Vermont I made this funding ban one hundred percent most small road projects. If you want to rebuild Grizzle Drive good luck stateside we're gonna rebuild Grizzle Drive.
Well they want all these.
Right but all the towns is especially.
So you have every city town that for the gap of that road town can find Grizzle Drive.
What have gone to other places to do is don't have an engineer on in on staff?
A lot of them don't go through and redo it a lot of there's still a lot of what's happened it's a lot of replants we can reclaim it there's really. Superior material in there and you've got to reclaim it pre-credit prepaid it most of them can be broken up that's what's happening a lot overall I've seen it. There's not many towns that are going through and digging up. Putting in proper groundwork for example working part without the. The profile the cross sections and all that contract would not have an idea of what depth they have to go down.
Well let me be upfront soon Peter I'm I'm interested in discussing it and hearing more about this all right. But things I don't like is I sat here of the other meeting group we talked about salt shit and it was one available Wendy may do well aware of it. I think it sold for eighteen thousand five hundred dollars if we're in here trying to at times just a discussion about applying for a seven hundred thousand dollar grant using. Almost three hundred thousand of our reserve fund to to obtain something like. You know I don't think we would have been over thirty thousand if we had gotten a bid on that place great team whatever it went for. And then had to put some riggers hire some riggers to take it down bring it over here and reassemble it maybe put them up in hotel over. You need to start thinking differently around here I'll tell you what I'm thinking right now I want to hear more about Chris. But I also I'm wondering why do we have a maintenance position for paying. You know s- uh roughly this cost of seventy nine thousand dollars I'd much rather spend that kind of money. Over on something like the public works director slash engineer to determine that and as far as the maintenance there's a problem. Well I look at this there's a problem leaking or there's a something leaking valve bummer or something electrical valve electrician okay somebody notices Kathleen may notice it. You may notice it when you're in the building I may notice it or whoever but I mean. I think they need to just start spending a little bit more differently around here.
Well just I mean the way I respond to that is that's something that you can talk to the next manager about looking at staffing the public works department and seeing if it can be done. One suggestion that I would have while you're at that.
Yeah.
Think about including the recycling um operation in public works. I haven't brought that up before but it's just something I think would make sense just something to have in your head so I don't know what you think about that Peter I'm just bringing that up.
I just have two comments to make and that is number one. You got the Arc Street Bridge project coming up so I'm gonna have to coordinate with the state of Hampshire Vermont on that one. Make sure that we don't get the short end of the stick and you also. Got the Depot Street Bridge is gonna come up but we want to know the same situation there we want don't want to make sure we want to make sure that we're not getting the short end of the stick with that. Turn radius and everything else there and I think you need an engineer to argue with an engineer at the state to get that accomplished. We're not gonna have that much sway. But that the other thing I have to say is that two years ago when we did Downstreet and the sidewalks and the paving everybody complained about. When we didn't have a DPW person we had a manager had no experience writing in the IRFPs for that paving or the sidewalks we had an outside engineer. And we also had help from the planning person that admitted to me that he had no idea what he was doing and he refused or begged off of uh doing the IRFP for the paving and the sidewalk so. That's all I'm gonna make that comment so it it looks like there's three people that aren't gonna uh vote for this position but so be it that's the way the vote goes.
What are you referencing the sidewalks and paving under the when we funded that position? If a manager if the if the next town manager can't negotiate the Arch Bridge. Project I I'm not sure why in the world that would require a a whole nother big position. The man the the manager can simply handle all of that in fact it should be right there.
You just made a contradictory statement you made just said that the next manager who you're gonna have to pay and you don't want to support the other position so you know. Either we're not gonna hire a manager or we're not gonna put this position back in so it's gonna can't be both ways.
Hey the manager to to go meet with the Arch Bridge staff not gonna be any engineering may bring the highway foreman I'm not sure why we would need a third position to do that.
I'm just making those comments. Think about what they're worth or not worth.
My opinion towards those comments well I don't think we need an additional staff member to go meet with the Arch Bridge discussion for the. Depot Street Bridge discussion. And I don't know which asphalt and sidewalk you're referring to rocking.
Runs Downstreet when they did the whole thing and you're still complaining about the chip seal it's been ripped up. You complained month after month about the sidewalks and the paving and the in the catch basins.
Correct what's your point?
Alright so we didn't have a DPW person we had an outside engineer doing that.
Okay we had we had a DPW oversight.
No we didn't that 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 project was designed and engineered before Everett came on board.
Oversight of the.
I was picking up Everett believe me Everett's got got his own issues to deal with but I'm I'm just saying that it looks like it's a it's a personal. Personality here situation versus a a position uh situation.
That's not true at all it's it's go ahead.
I wish you wouldn't make that statement because that's not true at all that may be how you feel but this is a cost a hundred nineteen thousand five hundred dollars. For a public works position that ninety percent of towns in the state of Vermont don't have.
And the voters voted the budget up to cover that.
Well not that.
So you're going against the voters but that's the that you know you you look by the sword and you're gonna die by the sword so we'll find out next next uh next election.
Yeah and that's fine because ninety percent of people that voted for me that day told me to stick with my decision.
Your tells your opinion I'm just making my comments.
I do agree we need to put some money into the engineering. Because there's gonna be something that needs to be done but we don't need a public works position I.
So if that's gonna be the way this is gonna go what are we planning to do with the the money that's been voted in the budget where's that going? We need to make that decision tonight. Stefan says he needs more information.
Well what I'd like to see is I mean I I've heard from people outside. Well, what I'd like to see is, I mean, I, I've heard from people outside of here also, all right? And I'm weighing what we're spending on, and I'd rather, I'll just come right on and say it. I'd rather spend seventy-nine thousand dollars in the, the public works director rather than in the maintenance position. You guys can pick it up from wherever you'd like from there. What's, you know, what's more valuable is, I'm not saying anything different, but I didn't say then in the eleventh hour, somebody elected to say, well, if I had more time, I could have looked into that. Well, you know what? We're here and it's now. I'm giving you more time.
Legally, the, the, because this is, that, but funding was put into the highway department. It can be used for anything within the highway department. Is that how it works? I mean, the voter's intention was, um, public works position.
We have, you know, so you know, we have, the, the board has the final discretion with what to do with that funds. And as I said, you live or die by the sword. So if you vote against the project that the voters want in there, then you could be voted out the next election. Who knows? It's anybody's guess at this point. But I, I just make the comment. So I, I, I guess we need to know, are we going, uh, are we, are we voting on it to reinstate the position? Or are we gonna put the vote off if there is one to be made and, and take up the, the disposition of the funds in another meeting? Or are we doing that tonight?
Excuse me, just so you know, there is public comment on this once you're done. Um, Gaetano?
Well, um, Ben never got, just got my meter interrupted and I wouldn't stop talking. So we're, we're ready for a public, if you have a question, come to public.
Okay, Deb, that's you?
Yes, it's me. And I don't have much. It's just my question is, what happens when the taxpayers don't give you that money? When they don't pay their bills? How are you planning on counting, accounting for a hundred and nineteen thousand dollars you may not have? You're having a long discussion on speculative income. Speculative revenue. That's it. Just wanna know what, what you think's gonna happen when you don't have that money. Thank you.
This discussion again, I feel like we had a discussion. We made a budget. They wanted to increase the funding by one ninety-five. I think you put it somewhere and don't touch it. Uh, I, I have. I've said it three weeks in a row, we're concerned about the future, uh, impact here. I'm not, you know, we're, we're hearing that the tax payments are coming in and we expect them to come in, but what about the August payments? Nobody knows about those. Nobody knows about the, the next quarter after that. So spending more money right now is not anything I'm in favor of. With more staff and, and, and in reference to Stefan's comment, I, I do believe you could get person to do both those positions with, with one line item of, of funding. Absolutely.
So anybody wanna talk about the, doing something along that seventy-nine thousand dollars? We have a lot of maintenance and?
We can't do that now. Nothing we can do now. That would be, uh, that's, that's above our danger. We're discussing this money. What, where's, what? I'm in favor of not touching it. We don't know what's gonna happen.
Mr. Chairman, to move this conversation along or end it, I would make the motion that the position for DPW be reinstated if I can get a second.
I'll second.
Motion made executive to reinstate the other position. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Gaetano may. Ben, no. Three noes.
And I just wanna make clarification. I mean, everyone knows that Everett is my brother. I was voting for the position of DPW, not for the person sitting in that position at the moment. Regardless, um, even if it's not an engineer, we need a DPW person. Just wanna make a clarification.
Thank you. Moving on, we have, uh, item A. And then, uh, Public Works Highway Access Permit for thirty-one A four street. Okay, this lot, uh, that, uh.
This?
Right. Okay, just a little offside here. Okay, there's no access for this lot. Thirty, thirty-one A four street, we're looking at putting in, uh, narrow driveway, just enough so nobody drive in. Don't be able to step out on the blockway. They wanna save the blockway. It's gonna be very height. Catch base, you can see on the picture, just down, down the building that. I met him out there on, on site, at Woodstool Mall. They're, just making out hodgepots, even when people are now, who's gonna go for it, it's a hodgepots, itself will do work. I put my conditions in there. I don't see any issues. They do wanna save, keep their water at your height and access load, got a distance slated, believe me. They're digging, digging, uh, lower in the driveway, just to avoid that. It's like the pipes will, don't have issues in the future. But, but then I've got the last page, second last page, for the picture. You'll see the, uh, conditions that all might refer. The void within two years. So if something does happen, you cannot achieve more of this void. That's standard on.
Everett, uh, Peter, looks like there was a access. I'm looking at that concrete apron down to the roadside, the side to sidewalk. Looks like there was an access there at one time or another. And that was closed off in the sidewalk and that wall retaining walls, but then, is that correct?
That's, I mean, that's what it looks like from that picture right on.
I, I guess my concern would be that it's getting closer to that drop inlet and if there's any traffic that goes in there, that, that, you know, what happens to the damage to the drop inlet?
Yeah, well, they're gonna be staying two feet away from it. The rain, the rain. The edge of it. Any, any water coming downhill, well, I can get into the base.
Okay, 'cause I wonder about if you're gonna put some sort of a ramp, which I assume you're gonna have to. Is that gonna deflect the water around that drainage drop inlet?
I make the motion to approve, uh, access permits for thirty-one A four street, the, the Chantel line. By board chair, it's on.
Second.
Motion made executive to approve, um, thirty-one A four street access permit, and if the chair is signing. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Moving on, item B. Bits.
Okay, uh, so paper, we accept those out. Definitely, I'll bid on that. Springfield paving, basins, all states, and pipe. Springfield paving, uh, is a little bit, right, circle around. Two hundred thousand nine sixty-three, basins worth two sixty-two nine, per set. All states nine, or two ninety-five, seven-seven, and pipe right up there, two sixty-six, two. So looking at what we have in the budget, uh, I kind of broken all that. We'll get a board to do. What we've got, town budgets, three hundred fifty thousand dollars. It'll be one, a little over two thousand dollars with water valve adjustments, eleven thousand sewer manhole adjustments. And we'll need a little bit of outside services to, to, uh, adjust some structures. There are considerable number of structures, example, gate, uh, manhole. Uh, cover desks, twenty-nine manholes, actually no brick link, that's gonna be thirty-four with brick. Some of those are sewer manholes, some of those are drainage manholes. Catch base recoveries, thirty of them. Just some of the no breaking. A lot of those, our, our attention is actually to what's solid, a lot of them are quite. Drive ready, solid. We'll start adjusting those. So far, it's, they're ready to go, and they're ready to ship. And that'll save probably up to eighty-one hundred dollars. So we won't be much added. The outside services should not be much of that at all. So looking at it, you know, after the winter, I took a look at it. What was prepared last year for paving, here's circle two, so that if you drive it up, there's a right turn right on here, so all that here, circle one. Then you take another right, here's all that here, circle two of this, goes down to place drive, pretty horrendous shape. So that really could use a shim, an overlay. Unfortunately, it could use some building too, but I'll see if I can, for it. You know, separate thing with, like, so many bases, maybe go that street down. That would maybe last a little longer. Uh, but that's not, not a little bit of, I don't know. So, so what I'm looking at doing is shimming an overlay, here's circle two, and just hot chip sealing it. And actually just doing the overlay on place, place drive and solid, and chip seal. So that'll save quite a bit on the chip seal. It'll add a little bit of paving. So summary, basically, what I'm recommending is a bid, accepting that, amount two oh five, three thirty-five. All states asphalt bid in a lot of one.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion that we accept Springfield paving's bid in the revised amount of two oh five, three hundred and thirty-five. And, uh, accept the all states asphalt, uh, bid for chip seal in the amount of one seventy-one, six fifty-nine, total of not to exceed three hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. And, uh, have the chair or the select board or the manager sign the necessary documents.
I'll second.
Motion's been made executive to accept Springfield paving, all states. And. Well, before we approve the, that motion, I'd like to hear about the chip seal a little bit and get an answer to, uh, hundreds of thousands we spent on the second minutes. I'd like to know what's happening with that or agreeing to spending another hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars.
Okay, good point. Uh, so I've been taking a look at it, and I probably, I can all states get, so stuck down last year, just a lot of, uh, the point. I, I looked at that, I've quite been looking at it. That's, of all the chips that we've been doing all around town, uh, the Parker Hill a couple of years ago, that was a mixture issue, because they, they come at chip seal all Parker Hills, which is still holding up extremely long. But all the chip sealed down, that great one, except for that one little section from Wave Street down to Square itself. And my assessment of that would be, there's a little bit of rust in there. If you do drag greater, just the greater plane down through there. And what's straight off is actually the high points. I've been there night with your moving stone, but I know the greater plane and the lower is, is dragging down through it quite a bit. So I think we've got some, you know, I think the town, you know, maybe that was not the best spot to chip seal in the future. And we're not gonna, uh, look at chip sealing downtown. Uh, or some of the reliant traffic areas like that, that we do a lot of stone over the greater way. I would recommend same way to that, but that's, they still will look at, if it's a vault by the, we have to see if it's all states asphalt. They didn't stand behind it. He has locked it up. It's, uh, we've got another, that would be great luck. When we, when we drive the last time that was done, it was almost in the two thousand.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm asking about that. It's, actually starts at the Arcs Bridge. So at this point, it's less than a year old, but it's may have already failed and it looks, and it's probably going to need to be repaired or replaced pretty soon. When, when we were discussing this same topic, you convinced us that it was good to chip seal these roads downtown. Right or?
Right.
Yeah, and every other road, I would say downtown. So, so, okay, so my question again is if it has a one-year warranty, cost a lot of money to fix it. It now looks like it's five years old. And that's in less than a year or so. Should we have a plan to repair it? Should we have? I, I still believe it, it wasn't, something happened in the application. It was different than, like, now it was, had a problem with that adhering to that. Wasn't a problem with the now street. So it's, it's not the surface. Those are two different surfaces, two different areas. So perhaps it is the man's or something similar to Parker Hill, something. So it happened on canal street and Rockland Hand Street, two different road surfaces. And we, we paid a lot of money for it and we have a one-year warranty with it. Or that runs out, perhaps because of the situation we're in, they could extend the warranty till when they can come look at. I believe that it's a problem and we spent a lot of money on it to fix it, going with the recommendation that we should chip seal it. I think there was concerns from the start, um, with the big crack in the middle and then. So here we are, we're, we're under warranty. We've asked about seeing what our options are before we end up having to pay, pay to fix it from taxpayers' money in a couple of years.
Everybody got it? Yes, okay. Uh, that is actually two years old now. That was done, uh, two years ago. Uh, they did have the money in warranty, which they came back in the areas and saw that they patched in, which were, are, which were separate areas than the areas that we scratched on. Essentially with the plow, loader, or, or the grader. That's the information I want this guy to take a look at. But if it is a fall, no, they're, they have steel behind, like I said, they, when they did, uh, Rock, uh, Park Hill Road, they actually chip sealed all the Parker Hill Road at their cost for just a few little areas. They said, well, since we got basically double coverage on the park road. All states has, you know, had stood behind the product. You know, if it does, it's an aesthetic thing right now. Whether, you know, what it is, we're still reserved, but, you know, the, I would say ninety-eight percent of it, let's say ninety-seven percent, it's still reserved on the road. It could be fixed, it's just a matter, you know, it's a matter of finding out if it's their product and if it isn't, the rust, we, we wanna shim the ruts first and then chip seal one lane, which, you know, that could happen as well.
I, I would use the, it's not the ruts, it's the way it was applied because the other section that got chip sealed, uh, where I would say the loader or whatever you're referencing, the six wheeler that plows those roads, plowed that road the same amount of time, yet didn't go there for some. So from a different mix, the other side of the bridge is different, different subsurface, different top coat. Different chip seal. And out street, it didn't rip off.
Right, yeah. The outbound lane, uh, there's, there's not much sign of any rust. We, it's going in toward those malls, it's definitely signs of rust. And it's, that not just plowed with the six wheeler truck over, it's, it's the, the summer, later winter time as well. So it's, it's quite a bit of stuff that does go on down there. But we will find out.
Uh, I, I sort of agree with Gaetano on, on the application. Was that put down in the fall? Wasn't that put down somewhere around November? And, and if so, um, was the temperature, could the temperature affect the, uh, application?
No, the chip seal was put down in August.
Okay, answers that question then.
It will not put it down in September. If they come up here, it'll be, it'll be, it's gonna be a lot, not in August.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Motion's been made executive to accept Springfield paving bid. Two oh five, three thirty-five, accept all states asphalt bid for the chip seal, one seventy-one, six fifty-nine, total of three thou, three hundred and seventy-six thousand nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hi, sorry, I was on mute.
So, can it, governor see or not?
Yeah, he did.
Next, anybody who filed.
These are some budget numbers, you know, basically the truck came in pre-calls, the budget numbers that Craig Allen had given me back in January. So it's put out a bid. We didn't receive three responses, but one, one bid, we can gee, uh, Westminster. Tri-State Truck Center out of Shreveport, Mass, did nothing. And our, our, you know, char boys, I'm not sure where they're at, but it had a letterhead and not a sick, it might be broken, completely, a lot. So, you know, we've vetted, went through it, do meet this back for the truck. The truck we're replacing is truck four one three, that was purchased back in two thousand thirteen, underbowed. Oh, we knew that, doesn't go, doesn't plow. I think Lee Manziel said that we do that, if I, uh, does plow, because we drive, so if we want to push or sell, we might be on five miles an hour. I talked to Wally about, you know, how the truck is, you know, the engine brakes is, is not the way it should be on that truck, they placed a lot of, they placed a lot of brakes on that truck, do the, probably the power horsepower. Five hundred, ten horsepower. Five oh five horsepower, so we're going to find engine brakes, do, do work on there. So you see the fast break down there, the truck itself is one three, one three nine four. Body plow and wing, seven two four fifty. The engine warranty, not cheap, that's sixty-three fifty for seven-year, one hundred thousand miles. Basic warranty at seven-year, one hundred thousand forty-five ninety, transmission warranty of five years for nine fifty-six. Total for the truck is two fifteen, seven twenty. Trade-in, go pretty long on that, forty-eight thousand for, and that after is one sixty-seven, seven twenty. And the budget is one eighty. It's, the warranty is off that truck, thousand time, and if something does go, we will be looking at, putting, you know, I have quality, so we'll go with engine cost, at least twenty grand for the engine. Transformation to be ten fifteen, possibly just off the, him should not, not the government there. You know, it's, like, it's Craig, you know, he's done a good job actually stocking vehicles. Or would say the whole state of the lot, the orders of protection passes, weren't Craig, somebody saved it to one hundred pounds, you know, fifty, forty. Blue was ten six-wheelers, ten ten-wheelers, all in different colors, different colors, blue, green, red. Uh, pretty much more or less the same truck. But he's trying to do these trucks, load them down, spurs, he's got same ton, greater pound, some of the northern towns looking at first, you know.
Whatever happened to Vermont Municipal, you speak here, deal with anything like that?
Uh, we think great level of liking, Vermont Municipal is the body, so, actually, you know, here it is a body, it's the charming soul. So, uh, but we, you know, we've got some of that, we've had head car bodies in the past, I'm not, I'm not sure who sold those, we've got a little bad luck with those. Vikings, they great luck, well, solid, it's in the, it's in the market, so you're not afraid of them. As good as good, if not better than most other trucks.
Now, one time we talked, you're, you're pretty fine.
Well, they, they.
Great, that's what you traded.
Right, yeah. Western Star, we have, I think they have both down. Western Star is supposed to be the front of the, which is, which is.
How about the International, whatever happened to that?
I would go there, but I thought about, excepting a joint, didn't, if they wanted to colonize, I would have said one. International has had a big problem with the trucks, because something thousand mile, they're actually just sitting there and regen. You know, wait on, you know, they have not kept up the technology. You know, these are, these are trucks, and sometimes I've heard that, you know, some people will come in and ask why the truck's sitting there, it's got to go through maybe fifteen lines or regen, so it's sitting there waiting for that one, truck should be on. So they, they will eventually try to catch up to that. They won't continue to sell trucks. So we've got, I don't think we've got, right now, I don't believe, you know, one old international left up there. Or, yeah.
I thought we were going to be able to squeeze it out, it was forty-eight thousand, but I'm sure.
Yeah. I think, you know, probably the entry size, probably just call forty-eight, that's pretty good.
What do you think about that?
I think you got it, it's, it's an essential thing, you come out of, it's good to keep up with the rotation that we got. You get off, but then you're screwed up for however many years, and it takes that long to get caught back up. They just, they take a beat. Seven years is a long time for a highway truck, so.
Yeah.
And it's mentioned in your description, that was one, one of the government accident, and then insurance, I remember seeing a couple of large significant towing bills, got that, that insurance, got here all that, and fixed the truck. Took a while. This is a different truck.
No, 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 this one is, wasn't, uh, it was the one out, out of William Street, so it actually wasn't, it wasn't moving when it happened, it was actually quite back on the line. Called a bail, and then it actually got a whole truck, and it actually, sold it, and it actually ate, so it was slow motion.
But they needed.
They fixed it, well, they fixed everything, we need, we need to fix the connection, out of a, so.
Right. That's not a bad one, very good.
Well, they, they know, they know that truck, because it wasn't fixing.
And the insurance?
Insurance off, insurance took care of all that, so, not holding the towing, we had a white house. Shannon, thank you Shannon for doing your job on it, she's still there. I was kind of stagnant for a while, they said they blew cover the towing, it wasn't just towing, it's towing recovery. So it's got a hole, and we're not cheap, like eight thousand, nine thousand dollars each truck.
Wow.
Yeah, that's, so, but that's one of the stuff. If you look on the latest expense sheet report, it goes to towing slash recovery. And that's for both of them.
I don't, I have any questions, somebody else may want to.
Yeah, I'll make the motion that the down rock can purchase the forty-seven hundred Western Star with body plow, wing and warranties for one hundred and sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars after trade. And authorize the manager to sign all necessary documents.
Well, sorry, guys.
Motion's been made and seconded to purchase of the twenty, what, twenty-one?
Actually, it's twenty-one, it was twenty-one, doesn't say that, I haven't looked, I found that earlier. Okay, so I'm not even sure if you want to mention it here.
It's not listed, but if you want to mention it here, it's not listed. The forty-seven hundred Western Star as described by Mr. Mishore, remain in seconded, all those in favor would signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Did the year, would the year of the truck affect your warranty?
It is a twenty-twenty-one.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah, we said it's here, twenty-twenty-one.
Yeah, they put off, off.
That's.
But that's the bottom still.
Thank you.
Now we have some naming petitions. I believe he's there, his headphones on, we're up there, or?
No, that's fine, they, they submitted, they can explain. Peter, Peter.
Peter, yes, sir, can you hear?
Yes, I can hear you. Yes, we have submitted two petitions, Rick Cowan, who's also on, submitted the other one. One is for Cold Springs, which is the small pond in the Bellas Falls Riverfront Park. And we discussed this for a while with the Bellas Falls Historical Society, because there were several other names in use. And they decided that because the name in the level history is Cold Springs, that that should be the official name. And this will appear on maps of the park that we're going to be preparing soon. Uh, and Rick is the one who proposed the, the commemorative name, Guilde Brook. So, Rick, can you speak to that? Uh, if you unmute your, your microphone there?
Mute, there we go. Um, can everyone hear me?
Yep.
Good, okay. Um, so you all remember Mac Guilde, uh, he was, lived up here for fifty years in Cambridgeport on Atchison Hollow Road. Uh, there's a mile and a half long brook that runs parallel pretty much to Atchison Hollow Road. And it drains three hundred and ninety-six acres, as you can see from the information in your packets. And we would like to propose that that unnamed brook be named Mac Guilde in honor of Malcolm Guilde. Uh, I include a little biograph, biography rather, of Malcolm Guilde, for those, does every, everyone there know who Mac was?
Yep.
All pretty familiar with him? So he's a, was a beloved guy, and he has did a lot for the conservation movement in town. And right up here on Atchison Hollow Road, he preserved a hundred and thirteen acres. He was a nature lover and a hiker, and the, the brook actually runs through the properties of two of his kids, Kate and Thad, you guys I'm sure know them. So it seemed appropriate to me, I undertook to get a petition going, per, with the guidance of Peter Bergstrom, who's expert in naming. And we have over twenty-five signatures, many of whom, many of those people live right here on the, in, in this neighborhood. And so we would seek that the select board would approve this naming petition.
Thank you. Need a separate motion?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, just a comment. Rick, you mentioned the name of the brook is Matt Guilde Brook, and on your petition, you've got it as Guilde Brook. I think that's the correct procedure, instead of adding the word Matt there.
Exactly, I'm sorry, that was my mistake, uh, Peter, that it's Guilde Brook, and, um, and someone has, someone has to have been, had dead for five years for you to name, as you guys may recall. That Mac, the fifth anniversary of Mac's death has passed, so it's legal to do this now.
Yep. No, when that broke it, that girl's cool was up there for several years.
All right.
All right, the motion, we accept the name of God Brook as presented in the application for the, uh, the G record naming.
I think so.
You might want to say approved.
Or approved.
We're going to do them separate, so we have a motion to approve God Brook, uh, petition, allegation here, that's a petition that's been seconded. Uh, motion made and seconded to approve God Brook naming, uh, any discussion, questions, are all set, everyone in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Motion passes. One more for the Cold Springs.
Let's take the motion of the Rockland Hand Center Board, accept the name of Cold Springs, believe it's on the Noles Falls store, for from the parking trails, area, go get it up, Hill Street.
Second. Motion been made and seconded. Uh, all those in favor would signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you guys both, very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
All right, bye-bye.
Bye-bye, thank you.
Thank you, guys, bye.
Yeah. Okay, next, we have now a local emergency management plan that's just been updated, and I think Chief McGuinness is here.
Yeah, and this may look familiar, because you just approved one, I think it was two months ago. We were late on that one, but on this one, we're actually going to be on time, a lot of towns aren't going to be, so.
It's pretty standard, it's pretty simple, uh, just updating, it's interesting.
And Peter, we incorporated your suggestions, we added this.
Yep, like, yeah, I got that, a number five for the board's information, vulnerable populations, two places were left off of review, and Sterling House were not on there, so that's been corrected.
My information is wrong.
Okay.
I'll give it to you.
Perfect, which part?
The phone number and.
Oh, yeah. Your information, yeah. And. Yes.
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 Uh, I'll move, that way we accept the updated local emergency management plan.
If you wouldn't mind saying.
Did you second it, Peter?
No, I seconded.
Motion been made and seconded to approve the updated local emergency management plan, all those in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Motion passes. Okay. Moving on, uh, review agenda items for the next meeting, which would be made to bid.
Right, here he's going to have a lot of advertisements for grants. It won't necessarily take a lot of time.
Yeah, so there, so there are public hearings and public meetings of this, there's, uh, five different grants. And some of the pieces, like modeling, relay, and having hearing, pair, numbers, uh, it's, you can do them all at once. So some of them are grants that are completed, Chroma and Robertson, some of the ones that we applied for, which we posted the past couple of weeks. And, um, uh, so it'll be just one public meeting that, uh, there's a specific script, so it, it's open clearly, meets the legal requirements of the grants. And can take care of all, all five, and they're not, uh, uh, one, one of them is a village grant, and, and none of them require that it be a select order or village meeting, or that you guys are here. But because they're, uh, public meetings, and we have all the mechanisms, the postings, uh, and the minutes and reporting, uh, it, it saves the most money to the town and village to, to do them like this, so. So that's why I did there for me to bid.
Okay, so we've got, and then possibly Depost Street Bridge preliminary plans from B Trans, I don't know if they'll be ready, Everett already sent comments on that, to B Trans. And then possibly a B Trans presentation of the plans for that missing link bridge, you guys saw.
But they need to warn the meeting for thirty days.
Sorry?
But they need to warn that meeting for thirty days, and then.
The public hearing part of it, they do, so the, on the Depost Street one.
Uh, Bridge, Bridge thirty-eight.
All right, so then that would be the second meeting made. They might want to do both B Trans things at the same time.
Because I think there's some input, and it's, they want, people want to show up to the Bridge Thirty-eight discussion.
Good.
If we know when that is.
Yeah, you'll know well in advance, because they, you're right, it is thirty days on both of us, it, it was like the Depost Street Bridge one, the year or so.
Wendy, is that definitely going to go on to make fest at that, uh, bridge meeting?
No, it probably would, well, it would not be, there, there may be discussion of it, but there wouldn't be the formal B Trans public hearing that they like to have.
Yeah, okay, somebody's mentioned that they'd like to be in on that, they just want to get word to them.
Yeah, you'll have thirty days.
Also, FYI, information on recycling, as I mentioned earlier, that'll be hopefully in your packet. I'll get it to Wendy, plenty of time to get it in the packet for the fifth, so you can look at it and see what you think.
What is that, committee, recycling committee?
No, I was fine.
You guys want it, I don't know who's on it, but you can, you guys want it, I'll send it to you too, I don't care, just give me the names and the addresses, or perhaps Wendy can forward it to you.
What, what do you think?
Yeah, what, what Peter said, what you said to me, Peter, was a, a proposed, uh, change in prices to the public for, for recycling. Right, that's what you're talking about, just want to confirm your, I'll send that.
That's an FYI. And the press release, also the, the draft press release, uh, Westminster's asked me to make sure they gets down there for the, uh, Westminster, because that, and they have to have it in there by the end of the month to get in time to advise people what's going on next year. But that'll be in your packet draft, if you want to make any changes to it.
Anything else? Review agenda items for the joint board meeting, which is scheduled for June thirtieth.
I don't have an email.
Need to approve orders, those warrants. Motion to approve orders, those warrants. Second. Motion been made and seconded. Prove order, those warrants. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Other business? Peter?
Yeah, I heard, Wendy, I heard that a great fine rumor mill, whatever you want to call it, that there's a contract or something that MSA has brought in for some productions this year. And I just wondered if the board is going to get information on that, so we could at least know what was going on. And I know that with the staff reductions or furloughs, the theater manager, has he been advised or anything with that? Just curious.
I just received an email today about that. I read it pretty quickly. It wasn't a specific proposal. It was a request to talk about how to arrange not concerts, but shows in the future. Because what has happened is we kind of done it on the fly each time. So I think it would be good if you had a more established program for them having shows here. But there's, there was no specific proposal. It was just an ask to talk. And I'm sure that would go before this one.
Okay, I just said it, rumor mill's rampant around here anyway. I just thought I'd throw that out, that I'd heard it, that's all.
Yeah, yeah, it was generally correct, but a bit ahead.
Oh, I have.
This letter with information, this question was a contract.
Yeah, it didn't even have, all it said was, we'd like to discuss.
You said it was generally correct, but what?
No, no, the rumor was generally correct as far as the intention. But not that far along.
Sue?
No, I'm all set. I just want to thank all of the town hall staff and the town staff for putting up with all that they have to go through with COVID nineteen. And hopefully, we'll be back on track sooner rather than later. We got a lot of things that have to go on in town.
I was liking that comment.
Good? No?
Yep.
We voted.
I think we was making jokes about voting for the.
I'm upset. I have, so we kind of discussed the Bridge Thirty Eight. And then I was wondering if we could have a update with the website.
Oh, yes, it is ready to go. We are just waiting on the host of our current website. What we need to do is have direct, because folks who are going to the Rock BF address, they need to be directed to the new site. But we don't want to eliminate the old site completely. We're going to use it as a legacy site because it has tons of documents on it. Old agendas, minutes, it has stuff going back, in some cases, decades. So what we want to do, rather than pay to store that, all that information on a new site, we want to keep the legacy site and direct people back to that site. So it just gets complicated in terms of the daisy chain of, of interactions. But I could hope to actually have the turn over to me yesterday. But the current host is not being very responsive. So we're doing the best we can, but it should be up any day. Let's write it up, actually.
And what are we calling?
Um, right, it'll still be rock BF dot org. Oh, yeah, let me know, because there's rumors going around about that, too. There are, thank you for mentioning that. There is a, some folks are putting up websites that are pretending to be government sites. And in response to that, federal government created a naming convention that has a dot gov extension instead of the dot org, dot com, and it's dot gov. And only governments can get that website. That's how you know that you're on an official government website. The, the way that it's structured is it's the name of the town and then the two letter state abbreviation. So we can have both Rockingham BT dot gov and Bellas Falls BT dot gov. Because it's four hundred dollars a year and because the town is paying for the website, I chose for the first application to be Rockingham BT dot gov. Bellas Falls BT dot gov doesn't go anywhere. It, it, no one else can take it because the way this process works is the federal government makes you prove that you are officially of that place in multiple ways. It actually takes a while, which is kind of a pain. So we still haven't received the official okay to go ahead with the Rockingham BT dot gov. But if the villagers want to do Bellas Falls dot BT dot gov, that's fine. You know, we can have both. I just didn't want to presume that the village would want to spend that four hundred dollars.
Right.
So thank you for bringing that up.
Mr. Chairman, one more comment, if I could.
I have a couple of questions. Response to that. I have a response to that. Okay. So right now, the town pays for the website?
Mostly, yeah.
Right now, currently?
Yes, the village might need a little contribution, but the town basically does it. Shannon, is that correct?
And then.
I don't know.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
Yeah, just the town generally pays for the website.
Current website.
Yeah, I mean, you can, if you want us to let air, like, I'm.
This is just a question?
Yeah, no, but it gets complicated just because of the way the village, like, when I work on the website, I'm part town and I'm part village. So you could argue that the village part of me helps too, but.
I'm just paying for the host website, the one that's currently there right now, the town of Rockingham pays for that?
Yes.
Okay. And then in reference to the switching over and leaving the other one for the legacy, will all the other information be removed? Are you planning on updating all the incorrect information that's on the website?
We would actually hide the incorrect information. So we wouldn't want to have anything that conflicts with the new website.
So essentially, would you remove most of it and just keep the archived older stuff? So someone went there thinking that they were in the right spot? And not go to the new website? If you remove, have you been considering that?
Yeah, well, we have, and that's one of the complications. I see Bonnie North on here, too. We're also looking at a different way of storing all of those files, too, which could be the next stage in this. But we certainly don't want people to have access to information that's wrong. That would defeat the purpose of the new website.
Perhaps the homepage of the archive should read where the new website is and then have a simple tab of archives, whatever you want to store there, since you don't want to pay to remove.
I could explain.
Sure.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, okay. It's a little bit complicated if you don't understand these things. Oh, and I just, about a half an hour ago, had an email exchange with a man named Ray who works for a company called Dominion, who has been handling IT stuff for the town. I've been, we've been talking back and forth with Ray for about two weeks now. Ray and Theo, who recently left the job, so now we have Ray. It's a little complex. RockBF.org is the URL, the website address we've been using for many years. I've been working for about eight weeks now, making a new site that has the web address of Rockingham VT.org. We're waiting for approval on Wendy's application that she put in, I think, six weeks ago for Rockingham VT.gov. Obviously, things there on the VT.gov side are a little not functioning well right now because of the pandemic. So we're waiting for that. But we have Rockingham VT.org. That is live. If any of you want to go home and type that into your web browser, Rockingham VT.org, you will see the new site. And for several weeks, I have been updating both that new site and the old site, which is RockBF.org. What we want to accomplish in the end, and this is actually not the end, but the interim, is for a new site that has been created by Dominion with the, everybody's falling asleep, I'm sorry, with your ass, with the name Legacy.RockBF.org. On that site, all these literally thousands of archived documents will be helped. If anyone has RockBF.org bookmarked in their computer, they will immediately, they won't even know it happened, go to Rockingham VT.org, which is the new site. On that new site, we direct people in many locations that if they are looking for an archived document, here's the link to Legacy.RockBF.org. Once this is accomplished, I will go back to RockBF.org and take away.
What we can do maybe is when it's, all of this has happened, have a full update. Right now.
I hope it's tomorrow, according to what I just wrote to Ray.
I thought it hadn't been approved.
Wendy got an email or something.
Wendy's dot gov wasn't approved, is what.
No, the dot gov, it will have to wait. But we will have a new site at Rockingham VT.org. And the reason for that is the site we have, RockinghamBF.org, runs through a template situation that the staff has found very difficult to use. So we've got a new site that is much easier to use. And as soon as the staff is back in town hall and I can spend time one-on-one training with just a few key people, it's going to be a lot better for everyone. And I think if you go home tonight and type in Rockingham VT.org, you'll be happy with the new site. There are also sections of it that we have turned dark right now. But there are some very lovely sections promoting restaurants, arts, music and theater, and so forth in our town that obviously aren't appropriate to be there right now. So that's how it works. And this, we've been waiting every day for about ten days now to have this switch made. And we're hoping it can be done tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Time in, but everybody's asking, and I thought I'd try to explain.
What question?
Yes, sir.
I just got an email sent up at RockBF.org. What's that going to do with that? That going to be changed over to RockinghamBromont.org now?
No, no. As, as Ray from Dominion explained to me just this evening, the emails are actually going through a, I didn't set this up, a Microsoft Word application. So none, none of this that we're doing with the website will affect the emails. And that's been a question that I've been asking our fellows at Dominion again and again. We don't want those emails to lose functionality for one second. And I've been assured they will not. So the things we don't want, we don't want anyone to go to RockBF.org and say, no website. That would be horrible because there is a website. We don't want any email to bounce back. We want these, this process, this transition to go smoothly. And I and Wendy and Chuck have been really working hard with the folks from Dominion, which were hired years ago, I guess, by the town, to make sure this goes smoothly. And the reason it's going slowly is because we're trying so hard to be certain that it's flawless and it's instantaneous. Don't roll your eyes. I'm sorry, I've been rolling my eyes here for three, four, five weeks. I swear to God.
I assume your remark was intended for me, Bonnie?
Yeah, it was.
No, no, I just went through a situation with Dominion Tech today. And, and half of it worked and the other half doesn't. So he's, he's playing with the other half to try and get that.
You're making me sick, you're making me turn my stomach. I'm trying to have faith in these people, oh my God.
So I see where you're going, coming from, Bonnie, I'm on your side there.
Well, I'm just trying to tell you, we've been trying and we've been working on it for weeks. And we have a beautiful new site up there. And I've been, I've been updating both of them, both of them, both of them daily with every little new thing that comes up.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We'll hear your full report.
Okay.
No other business? Do we need an executive session? To discuss matters?
Nothing here.
Okay, and motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.